Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out tonight for the council meeting on this Treasury night. We'll start as usual with the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, held by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President Suzanne Salder.
Present.
Councilperson Joseph Day.
Here.
Councilperson Nirmen Zubaka.
Present.
Councilperson Andrew Zell.
Here.
Councilperson Brian Madaway.
Here.
Also present, Mayor Valerie Leary, City Administrator Antonina Enzelo, City Treasurer James Wissman, Chief of Police Richard McCabe, and City Solicitor Ms. Walden.
Thank you. We have three sets of minutes tonight from the March 12th regular meeting, from the April 9th public hearing, and from the April 9th regular meeting. Take them one at a time. Are there any... I'm sorry, the March 12th is a public hearing as well. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the March 12th meeting? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the next ones are the public hearing from April the 9th. Are there any comments or corrections to that one? The hearing done. Is there a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those approved. And then finally, the minutes of the March of the April 9th regular meeting.
Page five, I have an update about the, in Councilperson Zubaka's communication that I made for census data. I have a correction to make for 2010. Should be saying instead of 1250, should be saying 1091.
Okay, thank you.
And then 2022 census total population should be reading 5551. That will go.
Okay. All right. Any other corrections to the minutes of the April 9th regular meeting? Okay, do I have a motion to approve these minutes as corrected?
Motion to approve is corrected.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Mr. Wissman?
Yes, ma'am.
Your report.
I'll be delighted to. I have a very quick report. We have about eleven and a half million dollars in the bank, in balance. And so that's very important because it makes us very healthy, which I've said before. During these past few weeks or month or so, I've met with the city council and others, and we've talked about the budget for 2025. Remember, we're still in the '24.
Right.
So we're talking about the budget for '25, and it's just amazing amount of energy that goes into preparing this budget. If you look at every budget line item, there's probably about 450 line items. There's three or four major groupings. But the people who are sitting here in front of you are doing a great job of analyzing the city's functions and putting price tag on moving forward. And we'll have a balanced budget soon, I'm sure. The other thing I wanted to comment on is the audit. We had, we have had an auditor for 2024, which is last year, and they were supposed to meet with us sometimes recently to go over the results of the audit. I haven't heard any indication there's anything negative. It's just that they couldn't keep the meeting at dates that we've had. So when we get the final audit report, that'll be another thing. In dealing with the current budget, 2024, we're, April is the 10th month, and we're about 83% through the year. But we've collected nearly 100% of our revenues for the year because we collect most of the revenues upfront. So we're in good shape on the cash side, money coming in. On the money going out, on the debt, the expense side, we are, still have about 12 and a half percent of our money to spend before the end of the year to fit into our budget. So that's normal. We can get the money in first, then we start spending it even, almost evenly through the year. So the year is, with this report, is 83% through, through April, and we have paid 87% of our expenses. So we've prepaid some of the expenses. We haven't incurred expenses that wasn't budgeted. So financially, we're in good health. I'm not going to go into much more detail than that. So if anyone has questions, feel free to give me a call and let me know, and I'll answer the questions for you.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the treacherous report subject to audit?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. Okay, and the report from the city administrator.
So this month has, again, been busy meeting with a lot of stakeholders in the committees. It's been wonderful to meet everyone. We did have a meeting with Delmarva Power, who, again, share that they are on their final phase of the gas meter updates. The Ford Street continues to be closed while they complete this, and a letter should be coming out in the coming months regarding the screens to cover the risers or planter. You'll be able to make a decision at that point. Street keeping has resumed this month, and signs have been posted throughout the city indicating when and where to park. A code enforcement officer has been hired. We've completed the interview process, and they'll be starting probably in the beginning of July. We've also met with the Del Dot Secretary and Representative For to talk about traffic impact districts, I'm sorry, traffic improvement districts and traffic impact studies for the city, and are looking into those options. Can you not hear me? Okay, I'll speak up.
Did you say code enforcement officer starting in July?
Yes. The Battery Park restrooms continues to be talked about with the trust. We are trying to work together to get this reopened and get the repairs made and have that matter rectified. In the meantime, we have placed porta-potties at the park where the restrooms are to meet the needs of those who are visiting the park, and they'll be playing twice a week. If there are any issues that anyone sees with the porta-potties, please contact us. The county has sent out some letters to residents and homeowners regarding the reassessment. This letter should come from Tyler Technologies. If you are confused about anything with it or have any questions, definitely reach the, reach out to the county directly. There's information on our website about how to contact the county. Separation Day is rapidly approaching at the beginning of June, June 7th and 8th, and we currently have a lot of vendors registered, but we'd love to have some more. We have about 20 vintage market vendors, 20 non-vintage vendors, 10 food vendors, about 30 parade entries. We also have fireworks and rides for the children. So it's going to be a great event. We are also looking for volunteers. So if you can go to Separation Day website, which is also linked through our website, you can sign up to volunteer. We continue to work on the city budget, as the serviceman has indicated, and are working through that process. And during this past month, we've applied for numerous grants, including municipal street aid for the street improvements, the ORPT pre-application for the Battery Park Phase Two, and the bond bill, which has multiple application grant requests that includes Battery Park, the police department, and numerous streets throughout the city. That includes my report.
I have one question. In terms of the Delmarva and the letter concerning the screens, I think there's been some confusion because the project started over a year ago, and then there was a gap for reasons that aren't anybody's fault. But the screens are going to be offered to everyone at once, right? Not just the final phase.
Correct. They'll be offered to everyone whose meters were impacted. The letter will go out with the details of the screens and the planters, and they'll work with each individual homeowner to get that completed.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Will it be required for a homeowner to accept that screen from Del Dot?
You don't have to accept it, but they're only going to offer this screen or planter, and then that's the only offering that will happen.
I have one more question.
Yes.
On top of ORPT and bonds, you mentioned another one?
Municipal street aid.
Municipal street aid?
Yes.
Have we applied for this in the past?
Yeah, we apply for it every year. Most municipalities do, and the state has been gracious enough to give it to us, you know, for many, many years.
I want to thank you for your report, and for acting quickly there to kind of get the information off about the reassessment from Tyler Technologies. I've had several residents reach out to me about confusion and misinformation actually on the sheets that they have, and actually opened up minds today, and there's some misinformation on minds too. If we could possibly get a blurb or something into the next month's prior, some of our residents may not know to go to the city website, but maybe we get the prior.
It's been happened.
Anything else? All right, thank you. Chief McCabe?
Good evening. This should be brief. I just wanted to start by saying, if you look at my report, the quality of life, there's one minor mistake at the top. That should obviously say April of '24 quality of life calls. A couple of incidents that are noteworthy. We investigated and made an arrest at a work-related aggravated menacing where two employees got into an argument. A weapon was, was pulled, a firearm was pulled and pointed at the, at the victim. Our quick response and the help with some camera footages from different areas gave us enough information where we could make an arrest within 24 hours. We're also currently investigating a shooting that happened at William Penn Court. It was a drive-by shooting at night. A moving vehicle fired from the passenger side window at several residents, and vehicles were hit. So we're investigating that. We hope to have an update on that soon. Last Friday, we received our, we had our accreditation visit. Three assessors came, did a pretty thorough walkthrough, a ride along with one of our officers, talked to a few officers, asked some questions, file review, and after a pretty long day, left on a positive note. We are, we are in the process of waiting for a report to be filed to us, and then eventually there'll be a, a meeting with the commission. The report will be filed, and they'll make a vote to approve our reaccreditation. And then the last note on separation day, since the, the next council meeting will be after that day, I feel like we could probably share this now. We're going to do as much outreach as we can, a little bit more than we have. We're going to, we're going to knock on some business doors, kind of let them know what, what that day is going to look like. The Friday night, we're going to let folks park in front of, all the way up to, between Second and the Strand on that side. Saturday, it's all going to be closed, but we are going to allow anybody that works down there access. Our goal is to try to get a bit before we, we shut the roads down. But, so we've already kind of preliminarily had discussions with some of the business owners, but, you know, we'll do the best we can to, the outreach there. So, and that's all I have. If you have any questions.
I just wanted to clarify, for the shooting that we had square, are there no injuries?
No injuries. All property damage.
Any other questions from council? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, council communications. Mr. Day?
Just a few things. So we are moving forward with the AV equipment here. We did get the PO for vertical line for the equipment itself. We got the PO for the electrical work. We're trying to schedule the, the electrical work now when it doesn't really interfere with the senior center activities. We are moving forward on the van shell. I sent out an email. I'm still waiting for some comments from a couple individuals on some recommendations. So hopefully by the next meeting, we should have that finalized. Our last litter crew event was on April 28th. We had 15 volunteers. We had eight bags of trash. We picked up one more's line from Wilmington Road all the way to Bolden Boulevard. I really appreciate everybody coming out and helping. Big deal, we, but we got it done in about an hour and a half. So I do appreciate everybody's support and that initiative. I also like to thank Antonina for setting up the meeting with Delmarva Power about the gas risers. I know that there was a lot of confusion and some questions out there, and I think we, we got most of that resolved. I did attend the Newcastle Historic Society's presentation this past weekend on the Newcastle Fire, the Great Newcastle Fire. It was very well done. It was well attended. It was really a nice event. So I'd like to thank them and thank everybody that participated in May Market. We did get out there on a rainy Sunday, but it was a nice event as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zell?
I attended a May Market volunteer taking photos of the event. Great event. It's amazing on how many people come out, and thanks for, for all the people who put that on. The dog park, we did get a, back from legal for a request proposal for the design. I sent that up to Antonina to get out on our website and get out to people to start putting in our, our request proposal for the design, so we can start seeing if we get people to give us a quote on designing the actual park itself. From there, we'll go into clearing the area and construction, once we get more information on the design.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Madaway?
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to thank my colleagues on council for their time, energy, and ideas, and their love for the city. We've had a lot of meetings lately preparing for next year, et cetera, and I really appreciate everyone's energy and ideas. We have a lot of meetings. Sometimes it puts stress on families or spouses, et cetera. I certainly like to acknowledge our families and spouses who have been very courteous as we've been meeting a lot. Last month, I had the pleasure of attending a city council meeting in our sister city, known as Delaware City, just a couple miles down the road. It was very insightful. I was able to discern quickly that we have a lot in common with them. A lot of the same concerns, a lot of the same issues, a lot of the same aspirations. And I will be working to collaborate with them together where we can find commonality to live community. I'd like to highlight just a few upcoming community events. The library on the moose will be out in Davinsville and Buttonwood this Saturday. This is an initiative that will be going on once a month through the summer months to help create literacy and get children involved in positive activities during the school breaks. This Saturday, Newcastle Historic Society will be unveiling its most recent presentation called Fort Casimir and the Struggle for the Delaware. This will be open Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 4:00 p.m., again, starting this Saturday through the rest of the year. June 1st, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., we'll have a blood drive. The following day, June 2nd, the Children's Free Tennis Clinic, it got rained out, but it's coming back again June 2nd at the Applebee Tennis Courts here from 10:00 to noon. And then finally, another new collaboration that we'll be bringing to the city of Newcastle is a free lunch program for students in the summertime that will take place at the library. It will commence in June and run through August. Thank you, Council President.
All right, thank you. Yeah, Newcastle's hosted this lunch program in some camps for kids for some years, so it's good. Yeah, glad you mentioned it. Mr. Zubaka?
Can I ask questions to Mr. Day first, just about AV equipment? Do you know if that's been purchased already, or just the electric port being done first?
It hasn't been purchased. We just got the purchase order for it.
Okay.
So when we sign the contract, then they create a purchase order, but the money hasn't been expended yet.
Thanks. So I was just asking whether we're going to have for next meeting or not? We're just having, thinking like, probably not.
Probably not, because they're trying to, they want the electric company to come in and do the electrical upgrade, Gregate on Juneteenth, so it's June 19th, you know what I mean, when it's closed. I'm trying to schedule that now, so it probably wouldn't be the next meeting.
Makes sense.
Maybe the July meeting will open.
Thank you. And, and Mr. Madaway, for the presentation for the Historic Society, is that going to be in the little library?
Yes, in the old library, which is a beautiful building.
My updates, I just want to thank council and city administrator for putting porta-potties in the, in the playground. Thank you all, and thank Antonina for, I'm just speaking up. We don't have a microphone, unfortunately, so I'm not trying to yell at you. But Antonina had a great idea to put an AV compliant porta-potty there as well, in addition to regular, and so thank you for forward thinking. I want to promote an event that's happening July. Also, all these great events, not to repeat myself, there's going to be Community Day at the Newcastle Elementary School in a parking lot. I think a fire department, police are going to be at the event, and there's going to be a lot of vendors, bouncy houses, kind of like a family day organized by Coach B Kids Group. Bernard Corey invite you all to just come, that, that he's trying to make a, a little family fun days that the community is going to attend. So I won't be here, but you know, it's going to be July 27th at 10:00 for several hours. And then this Saturday, just occurred to you, you know, visit Newcastle is going to be a lot of fun.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is from the mayor. I thought we were well into getting through a nice warm spring and into summer, and alas, that has not happened. I want to mention some things with a meeting with the Del Dot Secretary, or our DLLG dinner, or other things that council has already mentioned. In your packets, council, you will find the outreach committee's report for this month. If you have any questions, please let myself, John, or Fee know. May Market was a great event. I've got a big thing of flowers sitting at home that I have yet to plant, but we'll get with that. The community outreach program will still be going on. We're hoping to get one more neighborhood in by end of June before it gets too hot to really be outside. The blood drive, don't forget. Is there a link on the city website?
I think we did post it, but we'll post it again.
All right, please give blood, give platelets, give something. Sign up for a time. The last I looked, only one was on there. I need to sign up as well, so I am just as guilty. On Saturday, April 27th, I attended the grand opening of the Sheriff's House. It was an honor to meet the Secretary of Interior Deb Haaland, and because I happened to have an open seat, Russ Smith joined us at the ceremony and was duly recognized. I was also invited to an evening event, May 9th, for the Delaware Valley Classical School. Beginning in seventh grade, the students attend a protocol event each year geared toward their age. The formal occasion is designed to celebrate etiquette taught to students throughout their seventh to 12th grade years, and it was a really nice evening with a cocktail hour and then a dinner, and they went to Philadelphia to see the symphony. The next day, I had a tour of the Delaware Skills Center. Former Mike Carata, former mayor Mike Carata had also toured the Delaware Skills Center, and I encourage council to do so as well. I'm happy to give you the contact information. They're located on Ship's Landing Way, and they teach trade skills, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, welding, and they also do LPN, CNA, and some IT skills. They have a 96% placement rate for their graduates of their program, and it's at no cost to those attending. It is funded by the state. So I would check out going to see it, and I'm happy to give you the information. I had hoped to meet with a representative of the Army Corps of Engineers regarding a couple of the icebreakers that are deteriorating. Unfortunately, they have to reschedule the appointment, so we'll, we'll go, we'll take care of that next. A day in Old Newcastle, all I can say is volunteer. It's a great event. It may be raining. It goes on rain or shine, so prepare. The trust election is on June 1st, and as schools let out and summer travels begin, please be aware of families and children and more people in the streets, and safe travels to everyone. On April 20th, I attended Goodwill Fire Company's water drill. It was clear that a lot of work and planning went into that event. There were multiple fire companies involved, and I want to thank everyone who participated. I found it really interesting. Captain Moore showed me around a bit. I learned a lot. For example, their pumper truck can pull over 1,000 gallons an hour from the river and push it many blocks through hoses with auxiliary trucks stationed about every 600 feet to keep it moving. So they pumped water from the wharf down to the end of the strand at Bull Hill, just as a practice, and then put it back in the river, but made sure the equipment worked and they could get it set up. Wilmington Fire Company's fire room came in, and it can pump, pardon me, 12,000 gallons an hour, and it was really cool to see because they had to vent some of it off to the side because clearly they didn't have the capacity. But if they needed that much, they have the ability to hook up additional hoses. So Goodwill Fire Company said they appreciated the cooperation from residents, even though they know this caused some inconvenience because of parking limitations. But it really helped them to be prepared if there were to be a failure in our water system and a fire at the same time. I'll also mention this coming Saturday is the 99th day in Old Newcastle, so it'll be a busy day. There's a lot of work and preparation that goes into this, and I want to thank everyone who participated. Lots of you may have already signed up as volunteers. I hope you'll check out the activities, which this year include a special commemoration of the 200th anniversary of the great fire of 1824, and with that, an emphasis on the history of firefighting here in Newcastle. So Goodwill's participating, and they're going to get to show off their prized antique fire truck. And finally, if you haven't heard, the Historical Society Director Mike Conley's excellent lecture on that fire, I urge you all to check it out on YouTube. It is available. Pardon me. Someone's already mentioned the library's plans for the library on the moose, Mr. Madaway, this Saturday in Buttonwood and Davinsville. Finally, I want to say that the, I've been in contact with the Chair of our Flood Resiliency Committee, and she contacted, because we hadn't heard anything for a while, she contacted the State Administrator of the Federal Natural Resources Conservation Service Program that, that we're, we'd been told we were accepted into to find out what was going on. We were told that, you know, we were accepted into this program, which would fund both the engineering and construction of the recommended flood protection. Unfortunately, the beginning of the study is going to be delayed until at least this summer and possibly into the fall because Congress reduced the amount of funding they allocated to this program. So while the administrator thinks Newcastle should still be part of this program, our Flood Resiliency Committee will begin exploring other options for funding as a backup, and Chairman Alice Reel has also prepared a letter to Senator Harper's office because he's on the environmental committee, so I'm hoping maybe that can help nudge things along. The administrator is pretty sure will still be part of the program, but it just may be slowed down a bit. I'd also like to remind everyone of the runoff trustee election on June 1st. You can either vote that day at the fire station, or if you can't be there that day, you can go out to the trust office, Monday through Friday, 10 to 3, and vote early. They call it that these days instead of absentee. And finally, if you have brought a water bottle or anything else with you, I ask you to take it with you when you leave. This is a carry-in, carry-out program, so there's no one else to pick up after, after us. Thank you. So comments from Goodwill representatives? Captain Moore, do you have anything for us? Thank you.
Good evening. In the report that you guys have from, from Goodwill for the month of April, just want to mention that in the 1833, 1834 grid, you may see that there are no calls for that area. That's our river grid, so since the weather is going to be becoming nicer, you'll see some numbers in, in there. So I just, I don't want you to think that, you know, nothing happens in, in that grid, but it's basically, you know, weather permitting type, type thing. So we do get some calls in the wintertime there. So we do get some calls in the wintertime there, but you'll see numbers increase in there probably from here on out. So I just wanted to touch base on that. I want to thank everybody who came out this past weekend, supported us for Mother's Day flowers and stuff. We definitely appreciate that. So I'm sure all the mothers and grandmothers and all that appreciated that as well. And lastly, I want to touch on the water drill. We want to thank everybody for the cooperation on that. A lot of time, a lot of plan, and a lot of work went into that. We understand the cause and inconvenience. It's not done on purpose by far, but hopefully with the ATVs, hopefully with the early notifications and all, hopefully we made things less inconvenient, you know, for everyone and all. So I will say we had a big cooperation, probably 100% with vehicles in not being in the way. Everybody had cleared the vehicle, so that's definitely, that's definitely a plus. We definitely appreciate that. Lastly, on that, we did, we were able to meet our goal of 1,000 gallons in order to be able to flow for an hour's time. That was a goal that we had, and that's the goal that we ended up meeting. So it was a good day all the way around, so thank you.
Okay, public comments? I'll just remind everyone what the scrap is doing, please sign in, and then state your name for the group. Everyone's limited to three minutes. We have a timer here, so you can tell where you are. And in the interest of keeping meetings efficient, we'd like you to try to limit your comments to things related to issues you have.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name's Peg Bradley. I live at 26 West 3rd Street, right at the stop sign. So I have this magnificent view of Battery Park. I moved here to Newcastle for the sense of community. And I sit outside almost daily, talking to community members, as well as the many visitors who come up or down 3rd Street to access Battery Park. Thank you for the important roles that you play in maintaining and improving that wonderful natural resource. I can tell you firsthand that from the moment I look out the window in the morning until I go to bed at night, that park is filled with children and families and dogs and senior citizens and others enjoying that park. And the playground is a central feature. The old playground was wonderful, and it was well-used. And there are things about the old playground that are missed. I'm sure you hear that once in a while. As a daily observer, though, I can tell you that the new playground is used even more than the old one was. And the energy of a broad range of ages is absolutely delightful. Families engage together there with joy and enthusiasm that is rarely seen today. Thank you for making that possible. It is healthy for our community, and it's healthy for our society. I'm a lifelong educator, and I know well that playground use is associated with numerous health benefits, physical fitness, mental health, social skills, creativity, brain development, and problem solving. We know that's true for children, and I personally think it's true for the adults, too. Senator Poor and Representative Minor Brown have been helpful in obtaining generous support for state funding for the playground. And committed community members have devoted tremendous number of hours writing grants to receive a number of foundation funds. As council members, you hold the responsibility of creating a budget that meets all the critical needs of the city, and I know that's very complex. I'm here to respectfully ask that when you are deliberating, you will take into account the many benefits that our playground provides to our people of all ages, from our community and who visit here. And please especially consider those children and adults who use wheelchairs or walkers and therefore require a more solid ADA turf in order to participate. We all look forward to Phase 2 and getting some slides back on the playground. I thank you again for your service to this community, and thank you in advance for your support for the playground.
There will be mics hopefully down here.
You've been here already.
Good evening. My name is Carol Caspin, and I live on 4th Street. And I'd like to speak on behalf of support of Phase 2 Battery Park Playground. Children of the area and elsewhere are loving Phase 1 of the project. Building on that joy, Phase 2 will create even greater family fun. With all the history, shops, restaurants, and beauty our town has to offer, families come to live or visit, supporting the businesses and looking for activities that are kid-friendly at the same time. Building on what was started, the playground offers just that. Taking my own grandkids there, they often end up playing with other children of various ages. I'm impressed with the levels of social interactions, sharing, and helping that take place as the kids explore the various apparatuses. The completion of the second phase will only increase the likelihood that more families will come to enjoy all the amenities. I'm glad to hear that you're working on opening the bathrooms because getting a three- and four-year-old into a porta-potty is a little difficult. So I'm glad that's on the books. And also, I'd like to ask if you could possibly consider recycle can and trash cans somewhere between the basketball courts and the playground because one of our jobs when we go play there is to pick up the bottles and things and take them home and recycle them. So I just, in closing, want to thank you for all your efforts. I know there's Playground Committee people on the board and all the work the committee's put in. And on behalf of my grandkids and the kids of town, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll be going in a minute, ma'am. Hold doors, Sarah. Thank you. Victor Bryson, 604 Clark Street, Davinville. You know, I'm sorry to act rude in here, but this is ridiculous that we don't have a mic. These guys have been in office for years now, okay? I come here tonight to try to get through to you guys on that parking lot that the shrillos are taking samples in right now. You looked at me like you don't know what I'm talking about, Miss Soutter. Council's supposed to know everything going on in this town, okay?
Which parking lot are you referring to?
There's a top parking lot just before Davinville, which is a superfund site. It is a superfund site. Mayor Caranta tried to tell me he didn't know it's a superfund site, and that is bullshit. I talked to a number of council people without mentioning names about this parking lot for quite a while now. A lot of these projects that they move through with, like the Deamer Steel and all, none of them were superfund sites. This is a very toxic area. It sits just before Davinville, across the street from the old steel mill. The way that the previous council and all set this up, no one is called in. The proper authorities are not used. It's all been left to Bill Bart, I mean Jeff Berkstrom to approve on his own, and that is wrong. We have one contaminated well in Newcastle City now. Nerman, you and Mr. Matherway have very young children, and so do I. I am demanding that council have the EPA investigate that area. And the reason of asking is because the EPA controls all superfund sites because they're regulated and monitored differently to protect the people. Allowing the shrillos to do their own study on that is not in the best interest of the people in Newcastle City. There's multiple things in this town that must be looked into. And if I get my way here shortly, they're going to be looked into in the best interest of you people that don't know what I'm talking about. Some council members know what I'm talking about, but some of them don't have a clue what he's talking about. I'm asking you to please involve the EPA in that job. And I want you to investigate the violations defined 508 South Street that Jeff Berkstrom, the building inspector, told me that we can get them on. What you're allowing to take place here is going to cause problems for my grandkids. This stuff has to be more evaluated for the best interest of every person in this town. The people that sat at that table before you didn't care about anybody in this town. All they worried about was this, and every one of them should be investigated for what they did in this town. That storm drain on the Battery Park is fraudulent. It was put in to develop the Midori property. I was told that by Pete Tony, the president of the trustee in Newcastle, Conley. Well, if you don't bring Attorney General's office here, I will. Thank you. You've all been told, you've all been warned. You want a conspiracy charge, that's up to yous. I'm done playing. Mr. Weiss, thank you so much for coming on board.
Hello. My name is Ode Cardona, and... My name is Ode Cardona. This is my son, Ambrose. We live 48 West 4th Street. And we're coming here because of the playground at Battery Park. And first of all, we would love to thank you. He's hiding because he's a little shy, but he has tons of ideas to share, by the way. And yeah, we really want to thank you for the beautiful playground. And our favorite is definitely the zip line. And we used to love the old playground, but it was great when he was small. Then, of course, the pandemic hit and it closed. And I was really happy that it happened because otherwise he would not have been going to the playground at the age he had grown it. Yeah, sorry, I'm from France, so every now and then I'll do a past participle the wrong way. So it's changed for the better our lives. Again, we chose Newcastle for several reasons. And I think for us, the biggest reason is definitely Battery Park and the playground. This is, you know, of course, beautiful Old Newcastle and that. And so that's wonderful. Now, one of the comments, you know how the truth comes out of children's mouth? One of the comments that Enwas made after being thrilled and playing all the time is, oh, but it's not finished. And I wasn't sure what to say because they had just, you know, done this beautiful inauguration, and I was not going to be the displeaser, but that was his comment. And so I think that it's an amazing beginning. And I see that we could have more, I don't know, like toys and activities, not just for children like Enwas, who's very agile, but maybe for a different population, maybe for children who have autistic, for example, issues or disorders, handicaps, where, you know, people from, you know, diverse backgrounds can meet. And I know that talking about, you know, the illnesses, right, of our times, which are loneliness and depression and obesity that we hear about in America, I think this is really important so that we can all meet together, meet new friends, friends that he doesn't have necessarily at school. And I don't have to time to organize that playdate. Go to the playground, bam, he makes a friend, and, you know, different age, and then he's less lonely, then hopefully it ingrains that, you know, he can get off the screen and go and play. So I think this builds up, you know, an important tool for our young kids and be together and get to know each other. So I think that's that. Thank you very much. He wants to talk and propose ideas. No, that's a joke.
I wish you people would invest in a microphone system. Nobody here can hear you at all. Okay, I want to hurry up. Anyway, before I start my spiel, that guy before her was exactly right. I used to own that property where the garrison is. I was told by quirky engineers I could never build anything on that property. Here he sits, $5 million apartment house. I went to Senator Poor. I said, how did they build on that? Because Jeff Berkstrom has the absolute authority through the city charter to issue fill permits without oversight from Denarack, Corps of Engineers, Newcastle. Nobody should have that power. Nobody should have that power. You have to get a charter change and take that away from them. Nobody should have that power to have people that are supposed to be watching over us not be able to watch over us. That power should be gone. It's the same way with the swamp. He's filled in from Davinville to Battery Park, Mario Midori, 200,000 yards of dirt. All our watershed's gone. This gentleman here keeps writing in the paper, how come we're flooding? How come we're flooding? You put 200,000 yards of dirt and it's water estuary? That's why we're flooded. We're flooded because there's nowhere for the water to go anymore. And they're still dumping there, five foot above the graveyard. They're re-burying people in there because the graves are coming up. But nobody will go back there and look at it. It's terrible. Anyway, let me do this. You got this paper about the little church the guys want to build. I'm going to read it for the people. Encloses a building sketch of a proposed small 5,000-square-foot church on a lot at 428 7th Street, across from the existing liquor store. The plot will require no variances, no exceptions. It's over two acres large, and it's smaller than most homes on a strand. Yet your city and building department has issues with it. Nothing new for Berkstrom. He's negated me building seven beautiful townhomes on it for 20 years. Yet he and the city persist in rubber stamping outrageous exceptions and variances to multiple apartment complexes, including the one directly across the street from the small church, allowing 150 units on a plant that was only designed for 36 units. Given variances for adjacent parking, saying, most people drive many cars now. They don't need big parking lots. You can't make this stuff up, people. This is reality. They have a judge thinks that 150 units, where only 36 were supposed to be there, is minimal. She thinks it's minimal. I put icing on a cake. She said, I didn't even have standing to bring a suit to stop it. I lived here 82 years. I've been on city council. I own property across the street and next to that property, but I don't have any standing.
Mr. Demondi, your time's up.
Am I done?
Your time's up.
Okay, good. You have the paper.
Yes, sir. Maybe in your mailbox. I do need to say that Mr. Berkstrom does not have the power to issue wetland fill permits without Denarack authorization.
He does have power. I'm with the Senator for in the legislature.
Okay, next.
Hi, I'm Lindsay. I live on West 5th Street. I just wanted to...
I'm sorry, could you tell us your last name, too, please?
Miller.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to kind of piggyback on the other people that have shown support for the playground. I have two daughters. They're 13 and 10. So they're a little bit older than some of the kids that we see playing, but I can assure you that they really are loving Phase 1. But as everyone has said, we still do need additional support and help with getting Phase 2 completed. So I'm just coming to ask for support and maybe allocate some ARPA funds to help us get Phase 2 completed. So that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, write it down. I don't have a pen, so I can't write it down. Oh, thank you. You were so kind.
Apologies, I had to scribble my John Hancock over here. My name is Andre Jerry. I'm 65 West 5th Street. I'm following my wife. I get to say that because we just got married a couple of weeks ago. I'm following my wife up here in support of the playground, in particular Phase 2. But before I do that, I did want to first acknowledge a couple of the people spoke first. Mr. Demondi, I didn't get his first name. And Victor, wanted to say thank you to those two guys for their comments. They noted something that I hadn't been tracking to before. So just something for me to look into as a resident of the city. So thank you to those two. Um, but also to the people who are speaking on the same topic as me. So to Pec Bradley, Carol Casman and Ms. Cardona, uh, who are all speaking in favor of the park. Um, I am admittedly biased. Uh, I am part of the city's playground subcommittee. I have been a part of trying to bring a new playground to Newcastle um, for quite some time now. Uh, I'm originally, you know, uh, from Philadelphia. And what first brought me to Newcastle was the feeling that I got when I first came here, when I first kind of stumbled into this little enclave. Um, and it felt kind of like old city, but it reminded me of being home. Um, and so, you know, my my wife, then girlfriend, now wife, we kind of stalked this area for a while. And and we found a unit and it was a house and it it needed a lot of repairs, but it didn't matter. It was in the right neighborhood and we got in here. And then when we got in here, we we came across a lot of people and we met people and we, you know, developed friendships and whatnot. Um, and quickly noticed that there was opportunity uh, for us to get involved. So uh, the playground was where we kind of took up our mantle. The playground has, I would say, uh, noticeable foot traffic increased since Phase One. Um, that is what the mission was. Uh, but I'll say something different from what everybody says as far as the fun that goes into it. I'm an attorney by trade, but before I practiced law, I was a parole officer for over a decade. I worked with a lot of disadvantaged youth and a lot of kids that got committed to delinquent homes as a result. If those kids had a place where they could be safe and they could be safe in the company of their their residents, they could be safe in the company of friends and other people who cared about them and go do what kids do. I do feel like they would have turned out better and in fact would have not wound up in my charge either as juvenile delinquents or ultimately as adults. Um, so I rise in support of Phase Two because I see us continuing to put together the type of community that takes care of its citizens as well from this high all the way up to the top. So thank you. Ran out of time. I ad libbed, but appreciate it.
Michael Platt, Van Dyke Village. On January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, there was a Board of Adjustment hearing on a property on Bolt Avenue, where there were certain variants that were granted on conditions. The property was just rebuilt, beginning in the fall of two thousand twenty-three, completed in the spring of two thousand twenty-four, just at the winter of two thousand twenty-four. One of the conditions to the Board of Adjustment was all water runoff had to go to Bolt Avenue or to Eleventh Street. None of that happened. Uh, the water runs into my backyard, my neighbor's backyard, and even with a little little bit of rain tonight, it's noticeable. On April twenty-fourth of this month or last month, I forwarded the paper, the results for the Board of Adjustment. I give I received it. I think I'm accurate, but I know I'm accurate. I contacted Ms. Johnson to set up a meeting with the city administrator to no avail. Second email to the city administrator. Did not return my email. Third email, and I have one here. Third email, still nothing. That's made then, and then finally I I called the office and she took the time. Thank you, ma'am. I do appreciate that time. And still nothing. That was um, May eighth. Still nothing. No response, nothing. She's got time to be out leading Route Nine, a state highway with the mayor and two city employees, but she doesn't have time to address me. And then I come to find out, Mr. Bertram does not inspect projects. That house was practically rebuilt from the ground up, not one inspection report. According to the Board of Adjustment, there was a civil engineering, there should have been a civil engineering report agreed to by the owner of the property. Never done, city never done anything. Now, according to ordinance five thirty-four, Mr. Day, I totally disagreed with that ordinance, but now that protects me. And I want some action. I want some relief. That water shouldn't be running in my yard or my neighbor's yard whatsoever. It's just not right. And man, I'm sorry, for you starting off being in a civil servant job, I'm extremely disappointed in you. Not returning emails, all you have to do is put received, received. At least I would have known you got it. I didn't know if it ended up in your spam folder or not. And to me, starting off, that's sad, very sad. Okay, shake your head, I don't care. You haven't done anything. But this is my time. I want fifteen seconds. Go ahead, keep talking. Uh, could you add fifteen seconds of clap, please? Okay, something has to be done about this. Okay, I'm not going to put up with it. It's not right. That's what the ordinance was put into place for. Hundred dollars a day fine to that property owner. That's all. And the other thing is, I just have to joke, we got almost eleven million dollars in the bank, no exact numbers, and we approved that treasury report? What a joke.
I think you know we get the Ricky reports and they do have the exact.
Well, the. Why didn't the public hear that then? Why didn't I have to bring it up?
The reports are available to anyone who wants to see it.
I'll pick it up tomorrow.
Anyone else? You have further comments?
My name is David Tom. I mainly address the seven twenty-five Climer Street, but I can't live there anymore. Uh, it's not worth risking my life because I now have a basically a thirteen by twenty by three foot high flamethrower mounted to my roof. Why do I call it that? Two reasons. What it's made of first, which is wood chips and glue oriented strand board, lots of asphalt, plastic, sitting on wood timbers. So which makes it even worse. Uh, the second reason is there's no firewalls containing this thing if it ever caught fire. So the placement of this thing, the second from the end, what scares me to death is where it's at in the wind direction, which is six out of seven days of the week. It's blowing toward the river, right down the block. This thing was ever just light off, which is quite possible, being nothing's been inspected like former speaker just said here, so I could tell nothing's been inspected. Uh, you don't know what's going to happen, but what's definitely possible, highly possible, is that the entire city block will be engulfed in flames depending on wind, wind velocity, which is speed in the wind direction, because it'll blow right down the block. And the combination of having a balloon ceiling construction in this old, basically well over a hundred and fifty year old structures is a catastrophe waiting to happen. So I don't stay in my house anymore. It's not worth risking my life. And uh, the crazier thing is another one of these was built on the end of the block in Center Street, right behind me. Same thing. Same thing, flamethrower, made the same stuff, no firewalls. Placed right where to go right down the block and burn the entire city block down. So every man, woman and child's life is at risk with these two structures. And it was uh, the building permit was granted by Jeffrey Bertram. And then he certified it to be a wonderful thing. It was one of, is mounted on my roof. He gave him building certificate, basically certificate of occupancy, that it was a wonderful thing to be placed there. Uh, also, seven twenty-seven, Climber Street. First and second floors have no firewall. So it's basically seven twenty-nine, seven twenty-seven, and now the same building, which makes it uh, has two gas feeds, two electrical feeds. Uh, you have two, six people in one rental property and you have an old woman in the other. Uh, this this situation is horrendous. So what do you do about it? You know what I mean? You got a flamethrower mounted on two roofs, two city blocks, no firewalls. Capable of burning down the entire city block, both of them custom made to do that. Why did this happen? Why? You have intentions to hurt people in my neighborhood? Huh? Do you? Anyway, I I don't like wearing a suit. I don't like coming here. I don't want to be here. I can assure you, I don't want to be here. But I don't have a choice. I understand that that needs to be removed. Make it happen.
Does anyone else have any comments? All right, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is the discussion ordinance five forty-four, um, which is an ordinance to amend Article Five supplemental district regulations two thirty dash twenty-eight, all street parking and loading requirement section eight fifteen in the downtown Gateway District, subsection A, parking requirements for specific use are as follows. Five apartments. So um, this this ordinance has been going for a while. Um, last month we were supposed to discuss it, but we didn't have the amended version in the packet, nor had the amended version been posted, so we got all that squared away. Um, Mr. Bussell, this was your ordinance. Do you have anything to say to introduce our discussion?
Um, just a summary, um, previously uh, for the the area of one point five parking spaces. I'm just going back to the default that's listed for two parking spaces. And um, I guess with the help of the planning, uh, they changed and added some information here on multi-family dwellings and residential components and defining that, um, those items. And lastly, since this was initially uh, brought up back in February thirteenth, using that as the uh, the initial date for any application permits to uh, be enforced as of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Otherwise, um, the previous item would uh, anything submitted would be exempt from this change.
So anything, any project that was initiated by filing the application or request for permit honor before February thirteenth of this year are exempt from this new ordinance if it's passed, is that?
That is correct, if it's going through.
Comments of council?
Just have a question, um, Councilperson Shell. Did you just say the planning has already reviewed this, voted on and added just to the definition of the?
That is correct.
What was the reading concern, you know, at the at the planning commission that you shared with council?
Well, they didn't have a concern, they were just adding the definition of multi-family dwellings that was added into the.
Any other comments?
I make a motion to approve ordinance five four four.
I guess actually, I I didn't know if anybody else had anything. Um, I guess I have two main concerns about this. First, it involves dedicating a larger paved surface to cars. And that concerns me. And second, um, in many other municipalities, studies have shown that if you make it more difficult and more expensive to build, then that will be less built and housing prices will continue to increase. And that's been a problem in this area. Supply and demand that we all learned in basic economics, if you limit the supply, then the and demand is there, then the price goes up. Um, and I'm concerned, we have young people in this town who, you know, maybe they grew up here and now they've graduated from, completed their education, starting a career. They want to live around here to be close to family, but they don't want to live with mom and dad, but there's no place they can afford to live. Our young police officers, our young teachers can't afford to buy a house. Many younger folks prefer to rent rather than buy, at least in the early years of their career for a variety of reasons. So why would we make it more difficult and more expensive to build housing?
It's not that we're making it more difficult. Um, I think the scenario that I'm concerned is of our existing residents. We don't have a lot of space within our town and where this is located, uh, we don't have enough parking areas for the people that live here.
Okay, what do you mean by this is located? Which place are you talking about? Because there's three different projects, well, that started prior to February, so they're not affected by this. But what proposed future projects do you think will be?
Again, I'm not, if there's proposals coming or not, I'm more concerned is in the area that we have today is not enough parking uh, for existing residents. And then when we start adding these high rise apartment complexes, they're not putting enough parking in for the residents and it's going to spill over into our community where we don't have enough parking.
So you think that the apartments out on Seventh Street extended, those people are going to park in the downtown area and walk four, five, six blocks to their apartment?
Again, that's already going through right now. Um, but we do have situations that we do have land within our community today that potentially some scenarios like that could happen.
I wear much open land downtown, but.
There is.
There's a little. Uh, most of it's being developed in houses, um, twins or or roomhouses, but. Okay, any other comments? All right, so go ahead, if you want to make, go.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance five four four? I make a motion.
Did you request a motion or did you make?
Okay.
I make a motion, um, do I have a?
You're making the motion to approve this ordinance?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Um, are we ready to call for both? Okay, this is an ordinance, it has to be a roll call vote in this room? Councilperson Souter? No, for the reasons I stated. Councilperson Day?
Yes.
Councilperson Zelt?
Yes.
Councilperson Matterway?
I think that this um, makes the area consistent with uh, what is contained on the books. Um, there are certainly provisions that would allow for an applicant um, to appeal or to request a variance. Uh, and that has been done. Uh, it's recently been done by the Board of Adjustment uh, within the last couple of months. Um, and this ordinance speaks to a restrictive area within our community. It does not encompass the sprawl of our city. It's a restrictive area um, that is called Gateway District. Uh, I vote yes, uh, in support of the ordinance.
Okay. Councilperson Dublocken?
I vote yes for the same reasons as Councilperson Matterway, just question.
Most of casters will have voted for in favor of one of those. Okay, thank you. Uh, next item is the first item of new business. Um, it, this is ordinance, um, five forty-seven. Excuse me. Um, this is an ordinance to amend um, the City of Newcastle's code, chapter one ninety-three, sanitary code, article two, regarding the composition of the Board of Health. Um, whereas the Council of the City of Newcastle possesses the authority to adopt, amend, modify or repeal the City of Newcastle municipal code, city code. And whereas the City Council desires a robust Board of Health to protect the health and welfare of residents of Newcastle. And whereas section one ninety-three dash three A of the city code requires a physician to serve on the Board of Health. And whereas since section one ninety-three dash three A of the city code was established, the healthcare landscape has changed significantly to expand the role of healthcare professionals other than physicians. And whereas physicians are busier than ever and therefore may be unable to serve in this capacity. And whereas the City Council desires to amend the city code to remove the requirement that a physician serve on the Board of Health. Now therefore be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Newcastle as follows. Section one, city code, chapter one ninety-three, sanitary code, article two, Board of Health. Section one ninety-three A is hereby stricken in its entirety and replaced as follows. A Board of Health shall be established in the City of Newcastle consisting of five members as determined by the City Council. Members of the Board of Health shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the City Council. Members need not be residents of the City of Newcastle, but at least two members shall have education or experience in healthcare or community slash public health. Some examples of experience in healthcare or community slash public health include, but are not limited to physicians, nurses, nurse practitioners, especially those with community or public health experience, physician assistants, emergency medical personnel, individuals with a master's or doctoral degree in public health, an MPH or a DPH, and individuals with a background in environmental health. Section two, if any section. Section two, if any section, subsection, sentence, clause or phase of this ordinance is for any reason held to be unconstitutional or invalid, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions of this ordinance. Section three, in the event any existing ordinances or parts of ordinances are in conflict herewith, the provisions of this ordinance shall control. And section four, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon passage. Since this is the first reading, there's no discussion or further comment tonight. We will hold a public hearing next month and discussion and vote at that time. Um, and then finally, the last item is not a, an agenda, I mean, not a resolution or ordinance, it's a discussion. Um, last month when Chief McCabe talked to us about the street sweeping and he mentioned it again tonight, he indicated that there would be a grace period of at least thirty days um, before the police would start to issue tickets and give warnings until then. And he said, we're sixty days, and he kind of looked to us for guidance. So, tonight we're going to discuss what that guidance should be. Um, my suggestion is that we make it sixty days because it's a new, relatively new thing and let people get used to it, but that's what we're all here to talk about. Um, any other, any comments or discussion on this?
I agree with the sixty days. I think we need to maybe take a step back and look where these signs are located, make sure they make sense.
Yeah, they put the, part of it is, it's difficult to find locations where they can go because of the sidewalks and various things. But if there are some that are not in, the placement's not ideal, perhaps we can explore um, over the course of, see where the problems lie and, and potentially move some of them. That's another reason for giving the sixty-day grace period. Other comments?
Just, just a few. So, I don't understand the whole system, but um, so if they go out and street sweep, is there, and, and, you know, in this grace period, is there then notification to the residents? Is the cars tagged?
My understanding is it would be a warning.
Okay, but the cars tagged.
They'll mark something, so the people know, obviously. It doesn't, doesn't do much good if you don't warn them so that they know to do it next time. It is only once a month that each person, that each street is swept, so they have to remember and, and park on the other. And it's, they've switched it instead of doing like all of West Fifth Street on a particular day. They're going to do the other numbers, one side, so that not everybody has to park someplace else on the same day. And also, like, the truck can make it in one pass going down one side of the sweeper.
And do, do we put that out on social media regularly?
Well, we did once, because the sweeping is only from May to September.
Right.
So, we put it in the weekly. It's on the website. We've mentioned it at meetings to remind people, but it's starting again. So, yeah, certainly we need to do that regularly to get people used to.
Does it come in a bill as well?
Pardon?
It comes in a bill as well, right?
The cry.
Oh, the cry. I think it's been in there too along with the schedule.
And I had the same question as Mr. Day. Um, can we just confirm that, that we're going to notify people in the grace period? Um, I think so that we have.
I can confirm that.
I, I, you know, when you go to other cities, that's kind of religious thing, you know, you know, it's X, X day in your, in the week, you know, uh, of the month, right? So, I think eventually it's going to become a part of the culture of the streets of, um, but yeah, so it would be helpful if.
I can check with Chief McCabe. He had to leave early tonight because he has another obligation, but um, I can certainly check with him.
Thank you.
Within our communications, if we could um, identify uh, the amount of the fine and make sure that's communicated uh, throughout the various different mediums uh, to residents.
Can that be part of the notification for the cars to?
I thought that's what. Yeah, I, I don't know if it's going to be a formal warning like you get for a traffic violation warning or if it's just going to be a piece of paper tucked under your windshield to say, we tried to sweep the street today, but you're asking that that, where however it's done, that it include, if you don't, we're going to find you X.
Starting X day.
Right, right, right. And then that communication be communicated through the mediums. If you don't move your car, you'll get fined ten dollars.
We can try to do that.
Is the system working if there's cars on the street, they can do the entire street as well, right? Is that correct?
Well, it depends how, I mean, if there's only one car on a whole block, I think they can kind of swerve around it. But if there's one car here and maybe a two-car length space and then another car, it's tough because that's a big truck and it's not all that maneuverable to, to weave in and out, which is why it's important that all the cars on one side be cleared for the day of their sweeping.
I only ask because it would be helpful to put that in notification as well, you know, that potentially could lead to, you know, entire street not getting swept because, you know, it's not, because, you know, um, so that people understand that it's not just a single, single, you know, location on the street, but rather this impacts entire, you know, everybody else.
I mean, I think, go ahead, Mr. Zelt.
Are there any exceptions in place for handicapped though?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Do they need to move or, or is there exception plays that they're able to stay?
I do not know, but I can ask the chief that.
I think we should move for uh.
I think they should be allowed to, for them to stay, yes.
Definitely.
Well, if you've got several handicapped on the street, then. As we do all the. It may be, then I'm in point and it doesn't get swept.
I would say it's optional for them to move because you don't know their situation.
Yeah, I have a neighbor right outside my, on, on my street that I don't know if they would walk down, you know, like park and then, uh, so, I would, perhaps there's a, it warrants discussion with, with some of our neighbors who, who, you know, have parked, who are parking there and it could be different, you know.
And, and the, and they don't know. I mean, all, I mean, the street sweepers or the police know that this person is so handicapped they can't walk more than ten feet, whereas that person might be able to walk. And, and they're not going to know that, but that's a question I can ask.
And respect to, I believe it's Fourth Street is getting some road work done.
That, well, yes, while that's going on.
So, they're like effectively exempt, I guess, or match.
I always think they probably can't even sweep while, because the gas line is put in there if the street's torn up.
Okay.
I mean, the purpose of the sweeping is twofold. Number one, to keep the town looking nice. And number two, to reduce the volume of stuff going into the storm drains, which if the storm drains clog, then we get more street flooding. So, that's the twofold reason for it, which benefits everyone for those reasons. So, if I understand, the consensus is sixty days and I will check back with the chief to find out what kind of notice they'll be given during the warning period. Will that specify how much the fine will be once they start issuing tickets? And to tell them that if they don't, people don't move their cars, they may not be able to sweep the street at all. And the second question is, what about people in handicap parking spaces? Right?
So, just, just to clarify, and I could be wrong on this, but don't we street sweep because it was part of a court order this part for our MS four permit? I, I believe that. So, I don't know how many exemptions there are to that. You know, I mean, it was, I, I believe it was a court order, so we weren't doing it.
We, yeah, it was.
But, but that might be one of the things about the exemptions. You might not be allowed the exempt, but I think that is something that needs to be checked.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it was a state ruling that, that's why we purchased the street sweeper a few years ago and started the whole process was because of a ruling. And it was again about keeping things out of the storm drains because the stuff in the storm drains, some of it eventually winds up in the river and some of it winds up in the other processing plants, which clogs them up and causes problems. So, alright, well, I'll talk about the answers to those things and circulated, but it sounds like the consensus is sixty days grace and I'll let you all know when I find out about these questions.
No, great.
Do we need to take a formal vote or can we just have, this is just to have a public discussion about it? Okay, um, that was the last item on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, motion to adjourn, sorry.
A second?